Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Escondido City Council. Is it just me, or is this microphone extra loud tonight? It is, right? Okay. And my wife tells me I naturally talk loud anyways, so please, please rise with us for a moment of reflection and remain standing for the flag salute.
Yes, please join me in a moment of reflection. We came together tonight to say thank you. Thank you for the privilege, the blessing, the honor it is to serve here in the city of Escondido. We come together tonight as diverse community, a community of backgrounds, different beliefs, different presence and different futures, yet one common goal, that is the betterment of the city. We come together tonight to seek guidance, wisdom and discernment during the deliberations that transpired this evening. And in doing so, we lift up Councilmember Fitzgerald, Councilmember Christian Garcia, Councilmember Joe Garcia, Deputy Mayor Martinez and Mayor White, may be granted peace and wisdom as they lead our city into a bright and prosperous future. Amen.
This meeting is called to order. We'll do a quick roll call. Councilmember Fitzgerald.
Present.
Councilman Joe Garcia.
Here.
Councilman Christian Garcia.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Martinez.
Present.
I, Mayor White, am here. There are no presentations for this evening, so that takes us to our report out of closed session.
No public report. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, that was easy. Do we have any non-agenda public comments?
Yes, we have two. First, James Stone.
I have no idea about this much of an audience. Thank you very much. Your Honor, your mayor and all the council people, some of you know me, some of you don't. My name is James Stone. I'm a longtime resident of the city of Escondido. I've been a working independent artist for the last 50 years. Something has crossed my attention that I'd like to get squared up with the council. And we can make this really short. You guys put out an RFP for the management of the CCAE. The deadline was today at 5:00. Do you have more than one applicant? Can anybody tell me, do you have more than one applicant? Deadline was 5:00. I didn't see anything on the, on the website.
This is not an exchange typically made.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm here to say that, to find out why that was put out as an RFP, who was responsible for that and exactly what is the reason for considering changing the management of the CCAE? Oh, nobody's going to answer me, huh?
We can't have dialogue during public comments.
Kind of wish I knew that, knew that in advance. I will say this, that I've heard lots of rumors about what's going on with the CCAE and the RFP, and I'd just like to point out that as a resident of Escondido, as a working artist, I've been very pleased with the management of the CCAE for the last 26 years that I've lived here. And if the council makes the decision to transfer management to another organization, I'm very concerned and I'd like to say that I'm not the only person concerned and you very well might find yourself in some type of legal action. So when you consider anybody else who you might transfer that to, you need to consider that the CCAE belongs to the residents of Escondido. We own it. We voted for it. We funded it. And to transfer it to anybody outside of Escondido would just be a terrible decision. And since we can't have this go both ways, that's all I can tell you is that it would be a terrible decision. I emailed all of you and Joe Garcia was the only one who responded to my email. Thank you very much, Joe. But rest assured that I am not the only person who's watching this action. So make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on, can I change the time for public comment down to two minutes?
For the oral communications or for all public comments?
I think it's only fair just to do it throughout the meeting, only because we have, I think, almost 50 public comments at this point, and then we still have another 18 applicants to interview for a, a position after that item, so let's go down to two minutes.
Our next speaker is Becky Rapp.
Good evening, Mayor White and council. My name is Becky Rapp, and first, I really quickly just wanted to thank you for the beautiful Christmas music that's piped through the property. I walked out of the meeting last month and Hark the Herald Angels Sing was being played, and I just wanted to thank you for this tradition because I think it makes everybody smile. Anyway, I, tonight, I wanted to share with you an article from the Sacramento County News stating that the Sacramento Board of Supervisors unanimously passed an ordinance prohibiting the sale of products containing intoxicating cannabinoids derived from hemp products. This ordinance is similar to the emergency ban the state recently implemented strengthening and emphasizing the penalty structure. The Sacramento Board of Supervisors stated that their primary concern is the safety and well-being of their community, especially children and adolescents. Implementing a policy such as this will help to eliminate the risks associated with unregulated substance sales that lead to health emergencies. Loopholes in the Farm Bill of 2018 and Assembly Bill 45 have allowed for unregulated products containing THC or marijuana to be sold in locations such as smoke shops, gas stations and convenience stores. Sacramento's ban will prohibit the sale of chemically and synthetically altered hemp products. To take this a step further, they've implemented a penalty structure, $2,500 for first violation, $5,000 for a second and $10,000 for a third. The penalties send a message that the county of Sacramento is serious about protecting children and youth. And I ask this council to consider a similar policy, sending a message to residents that you value health and safety of young people, setting a high penalty structure that will be implemented and enforced. Our city would do well to adopt a ban of our own, perhaps with the input of the narcotics officers who have responded to the smoke shop situations and complaints. Thank you.
No further comments on oral communication.
All right, thank you. That takes us to our consent calendar. Items one through four are on consent. I move to approve the consent calendar as is. I would ask for a second, and I have a second. Please open the voting.
Voting is open. Motion approved, 5-0.
All right. Takes us to our first and only public hearing. We'll open this hearing and turn the time over to Ms. Marones.
Okay, you can, you can continue.
Okay, good evening, Deputy Mayor, City Council. My name is Veronica Marones. I'm our city planner, and I'm here to present item number five to you this evening, which is a city-initiated request to modify an existing conditional use permit for social services located at 550 West Washington, which is currently operated by Interfaith Community For tonight's presentation, we'll first cover the staff recommended action before the council, followed by general site overview, and then discuss the background of this request. Specifically, staff will identify the relevant stakeholders involved in this process, provide a summary of the site's permit history, and then cover city identified issues and concerns associated with the current use operations occurring at the project site. These city identified issues and the reas, are the reason for the proposed modification to the use permit before you this evening. Staff will then provide a high-level walkthrough of the proposed modifications to the existing permit, and then finally, we'll cover the environmental clearance and recommendation and conclusion of our presentation. Staff recommends that the city council adopt Resolution Number 202502 with incorporation of a change to the draft conditions of approval. Please note that the request to incorporate a change to the draft conditions of approval is not covered under your staff report and is a request that has arisen between the time that the staff report was published and tonight's meeting. Should council approve the recommended action, the existing conditional use permit for 550 West Washington would be modified per the staff's, the staff-proposed changes found under Attachment Four of your staff report, and provide for an additional modification to those staff-proposed changes, which we will go over. After publishing of this meeting's agenda packet, the operator contacted city staff to notify them that a currently permitted operational component to allow seasonal meal services had been erroneously removed by their team during iterative review of the proposed conditions, and requested it be included in the staff-proposed modification. City staff have no concerns or issues with this component for seasonal meal service being maintained as a part of the operator's use permit, and therefore, we recommend that the city council include this language should a motion to approve the recommended action be put forward. That would be a change to condition of approval E2, and it would specifically apply to seasonal meals associated with Thanksgiving and Christmas and the days before. So tonight's recommended action aligns with city identified essential services of keeping our city clean for public health and safety, as well as land use development, and aligns with city council identified priority, priorities of improving public safety. So moving on to the project site, the site is located at 550 West Washington. That's on the northeastern corner of the Washington and Quince intersection. The site maintains an existing general planned land use designation of light industrial and a zoning designation of light industrial. The project site is abutted to the north and west by properties with a general commercial land use designation. The property directly to the south across Washington maintains a general land use designation of light industrial, and to the east across Quince is designated planned commercial. For zoning, the properties abutting to the north and east are zone general commercial, and those directly to the south and west are light industrial. And finally, existing development on this, surrounding the property consists of multifamily residential to the north, a hotel use with an approved entitlement for single-room occupancy residential to the east, an outdoor storage industrial use to the south across Washington, and the world marketplace to, to the west. To delve into the background of how we ended up before you this evening, staff would like to identify and provide background on the key stakeholders involved in this process. The first is the Escondido Police Department's Community Oriented Policing and Problem Solving Unit, also referred to as the COPS unit. That's how I will refer to them moving forward. Their mission is to support patrol operations in areas that experience persistent crime and disorder, with an emphasis on problem solving as to abate recurrence of such crime and disorder. The COPS unit is made up of several members of EPD and also includes a psychiatric emergency response team technician, which I will refer to as a PERT technician. The COPS unit seeks to work with community members experiencing homelessness or who may be unsheltered, as well as service providers, such as Interfaith Community Services, and businesses, property owners, anyone who may be impacted by such persistent crime and disorder. The COPS unit's goal is to seek the lowest level of care possible when working with folks who may be struggling with severe and persistent mental illness and substance use disorders while maintaining safety for all individuals involved. In addition to the COPS unit, the city's Development Services Department is involved as the action before you is related to a land use entitlement, and the operator's compliance with the legally binding conditions of approval associated with that entitlement. The Planning Division oversees entitlement processing for land use permits, permits, such as conditional use permits, and the Code Compliance Division is responsible for compliance of the city's municipal code, which would include compliance with permit conditions of approval. The city-initiated request for modification to the existing CUP at 550 West Washington directly impacts the current operator of the, of this facility, Interfaith Community Services. For brevity, staffs will refer to the operator as Interfaith throughout this presentation. Interfaith has been located at this site for over 20 years, which serves as their headquarters. They are a nonprofit serving the greater San Diego County area and provide a range of support services through their operation, including but not limited to transitional and emergency supportive housing, various types of case management and counseling, bulk food storage and distribution, as well as walk-up services. All of these services are listed on this slide are currently occurring at the project Some general permit history on the project site now that we know who the stakeholders involved are with the city-initiated request. So generally speaking, in 2000, Interfaith applied to amend the Escondido zoning code to permit for social service uses within the light industrial zone subject to a conditional use permit. That requirement also entails the need to be adjacent to the general commercial zone and be within 500 feet of a public, of public transportation, both of which the site complies with. As part of that 2000 request, Interfaith also received approval of a conditional use permit for the social service use, which allowed for case management, food storage and distribution, as well as a 10-bed veteran shelter. Over the last 19 years, Interfaith received a number of modifications to their CUP, their conditional use permit, for purposes of expansion, eventually utilizing the entire site. The most recent approval associated with their use permit was in 2019, when they established an onsite ancillary medical service for their clients and programming. So back to the COPS unit. The COPS unit began reviewing calls for service data within the city back in January of 2022 to identify any areas or hotspots within the city related to persistent crime. The map on this slide shows that 2022 call for service data in the colorway shown across the entire map. This call for service data, as shown here, is then has, excuse me, projects, COPS projects overlaid and showed that there was a high concentration of calls within the general Quince and Mission area of the city. So this is the Mish, Quince, and Washington is to the south. As the COPS unit began to implement projects throughout the city based on this call for service data, you'll note that these white dots on the screen show some of those project locations. There was a, a trend that showed 11 of the projects implemented in 2023 occurred within this general area out of a total 15 citywide, so that represents over 70% of the COPS projects in the city occurring within this general area. Through project implementation in the area and in conjunction with data analysis conducted, the COPS unit identified a nexus between the project site and the crime rates in the area. As a result, the COPS unit opened a project for the 550 West Washington location. The COPS project for the Interfaith site was launched in September of '23, and COPS unit staff met with Interfaith leadership in September of 2023 to share information and discuss the project underway. So September of 2023, our COPS unit initiates a project at the 550 West Washington location and meet with Interfaith leadership to discuss. So information shared with Interfaith at their September '23 meeting with Escondido Police staff included an assessment conducted by the police department that found the operator in violation of several of the conditions of their conditional use permit, along with a persistent high ranking in calls for service. Interfaith regularly ranked in the top 20 calls for service throughout 2023. As a side note, the COPS project identified over 30 CUP violations, all of which are documented under Attachment Two of this staff report, with examples of such violations shown on this slide. There we go. While working with Interfaith to abate the issues identified by the COPS unit, Police Department staff noted there appeared to be a lack of clarity regarding operational standards and general process and procedure surrounding the operation. EPD staff requested additional clarifying information as a result of this in September of 2023, and subsequent responses from Interfaith raised additional questions and needs for clarification due to contradictory information. During the COPS project work effort, PD, Escondido PD continued to request clarification and information from Interfaith. Between October of 2023 and February of 2024, the Police Department's requests for clarification from Interfaith leadership continued to either go unanswered or caused additional ambiguity in their operations and process. During the same period of time, Escondido Police Department staff continued to observe CUP violations. In February of 2024, the former chief of police then issued a letter suspending the COPS project and referring the CUP violations to the city attorney's office and Code Compliance Division. That letter is an attachment to your staff report. Subsequently, the Planning Division, in conjunction with Code Compliance and the Attorney's Office, conducted document review of the prior five conditional use permits that we saw earlier in this presentation, and identified additional concerns regarding the existing conditions as they pertained to clarity, specificity and redundancy. As a result, city staff provided a new revised draft of conditions for the existing conditional use permit that addressed both internal concerns regarding clarity, as well as operator concerns identified by the Escondido Police Department. Those draft conditions are provided on the stat, under the staff report under Attachment The purpose of the proposed changes to the CUP are twofold. One, to address the five past sets of conditions associated with each prior modification and consolidate them into one master set of conditions, while providing additional clarity. And two, to update and add conditions that seek to ameliorate the issues identified by Escondido Police. Staff led the initial redrafting of those conditions with the intent of being responsive to past concerns raised by the police department, code compliance and the operator regarding vague language. Further, the updated conditions served to reduce calls for service for the site and general area. One of the challenges with revising the conditions included, sifting through over 175 conditions of approval across past, the past five CUPs. The conditions had to be mapped to ensure none were excluded and to ensure no further redundancy or conflict existed among the approving documents. After, after staff drafted a preliminary set of modified conditions, these changes were presented to the homelessness subcommittee on three separate occasions, one of which included the presence of Interfaith's leadership team. Should also be noted that once a set of preliminary draft conditions was established, city staff worked with the operator to refine conditions to a point that both city staff, the subcommittee and the operator could agree on. However, we'll discuss the operator's concerns in subsequent slides related to these conditions. In working through all of the conditions, staff identified areas of concern with the approvals, as noted earlier, primarily the need to consolidate the prior approvals into one larger master document for ease of compliance by not only the operator, but ease of monitoring and enforcement by the city as well, as the need for just more specific language related to the responsibilities and roles associated with those conditions. Additionally, as identified earlier, certain operational concerns also needed to be addressed within the revised conditions. City staff included several new conditions, all with the intent of reducing nuisance activity and visibility from the public right-of-way of such activity, creating structure around information sharing to ensure better decision-making abilities across all stakeholders, and clarifying what future violations by the, by an operator of the CUP would entail and should they occur, should they occur. So with all of that said, the previous 175 conditions have been consolidated down to 63 parent conditions. This includes numerous rephrasings of old existing conditions. Staff also incorporated the city's standard set of contemporary conditions that apply to all current entitlement projects that cover general code provisions and disclosures. Out of all the 175 conditions, only seven conditions were fully removed. These conditions removed were administrative in nature and related to the, uh, use activity no longer on the site, specifically automotive services that previously occurred on the site. One change of note related to the previously allowed walk-up services is that now folks receiving such services must first register in a program with Interfaith before receiving walk-up services. The new conditions added will ensure detailed annual reporting occurs on the use operations, require a security plan and right-of-way mitigation plan be provided, detailing how the operator will respond to certain nuisance activity and potential crime, and explicitly detail how any future CUP violations will be handled by the city. Ultimately, with the proposed modifications to the CUP's conditions of approval, all existing operational uses would be maintained, with the exception of to-go meal services. Under the draft conditions proposed, no meal services would be allowed to be taken off-site for consumption off-site. Staff will point out that as of the publishing of this agenda packet, the understanding by staff was that the operator was in agreement with all draft conditions. However, the operator has expressed concern on two points. Point number one is shown under asterisk number one, the inadvertent removal of previously permitted holiday meal services, which staff recommends be added in by council as part of the motion for approval, should such a motion be made. And two, the change to the elimination of to-go meal services, i.e. the off-site meal services for off-site consumption, specifically SAC lunches distributed at morning meal So with all of that said, the proposed city-initiated modifications are categorically exempt pursuant to Secua, Section 15301, and should the proposed modifications be approved, city staff will file a notice of exemption for the project. And so based on the information contained in your staff report and the associated attachments, as well as the information provided in tonight's presentation, staff recommends the city council approve the city-initiated CUP modification to the existing CUP in order to consolidate and clarify existing conditions of approval, add new conditions that seek to abate the nuisance activity identified by Escondido Police, while adding back in the allowance for holiday meal services for Thanksgiving and Christmas. Council would approve the request by adopting the resolution with the following addition to condition E2 of the draft conditions. That concludes staff's presentation. Myself, as well as the chief of police, are available for any questions the council may have, and I believe the operator is also present this evening to answer any potential questions.
Thank you, Veronica. We'll move on to Interfaith's presentation. That'll be followed by public comments.
Appreciate the opportunity to be with you tonight. I've had the opportunity of presenting at this council many times over the years. This time with the mic on. This is the first time I've gotten to sit at the, at the desk here, so I appreciate that, and I think it's fitting, given the focus that we've had together on partnership together over this last year. I'd like to share our perspective on what we've been doing together in partnership to address the concerns raised by the city and speak to our optimism moving forward to work together to continue strengthening Escondido for all of our residents. Interfaith Community Services, as you know, has operated here in the city of Escondido for more than 45 years. We were founded by diverse faith communities, and as I was preparing for this presentation, I realized the photograph here is an old one because it shows the hedges before we engaged the police and the COPS project in fall of '23. They recommended a number of facility improvements, which we made over the course of a 30-day period after that initial September meeting, and one of them was to reduce the size of those hedges. So Ms. Marones's presentation included the, the current day photograph of, of that facility. Out of our 550 West Washington location, we are serving in partnership with your support and the support of hundreds of faith communities, thousands of community supporters, more than 20,000 unique individuals. We are very proud of the fact that in the last year alone, in the last 12 months, through your support and through our partnerships, we have ended homelessness for 1,094 adults and children. These are individuals moving out of homelessness into homes of their own. We're also very proud of the fact that nearly 1,500 individuals have been prevented from ever experiencing homelessness. And when we think about the crisis of homelessness facing our communities, can we imagine what it would be like if there were another 2,500 individuals on the streets today? We're very proud of the work that we do together in partnership in this way. Interfaith has held a conditional use permit at our Escondido headquarters for more than 23 years. The notice of violation that was issued in March was the first notice of violation that we had received in that time. We took this very seriously, and we've really appreciated the opportunity to work with staff and elected leadership to address the concerns that were raised in those, in those, in that notice of violation. Ms. Marones laid out with a lot of clarity the amount of meetings and back and forth that happened. I'll highlight a few elements of what the changes are that are being proposed for your consideration tonight. Sustaining nearly all critical programs and services, with the exception of the, the basic needs humanitarian SAC lunches, which I'll speak to in a moment. Creating a prioritization process for the city of Escondido and for Escondido Police to refer individuals directly into our programs, clarifying how that process works, strengthening communication, which has been key throughout this engagement, and addressing concerns around litter and nuisance behaviors. It creates a new policy that any individual who litters, loiterers or camps within 200 yards is prohibited from receiving services at Interfaith Community Services. These are new additions that have been made that we are supportive of to demonstrate the partnership to address these concerns and work together with the city to support our neighbors in need to be able to access services to move forward in their lives effectively and productively. and productively. All individuals now accessing our morning meal services and our food pantry services under the terms of the proposed modification will be required to register and enroll in Interfaith programs. Interfaith has proactively launched this new procedure. In the last three days, we have registered 117 unique individuals, completed screenings on those individuals, and enrolled them in programs and services during our morning meal services, providing not just a basic humanitarian need to help them in a time of crisis, but to also connect them to addiction treatment, to housing, to shelter, to employment, to other, other services that, that we provide. The CUP modification also updates security and operations plans to address some of the concerns that have been raised. When an individual does depart from one of our residential programs, if they're not from Escondido, the modified CUP clarifies how we help them transport back to their community of origin. This is relevant specifically to our treatment program. 70% of our residents are from Escondido, so it's a minority who we're discussing here, but if they do need to return, to exit, we help them return back to, to that community for that small number who are not from Escondido. Clarifies the process for notice of violations and clearing them up, strengthens annual reporting so that we can share the impact and the outcomes of the programs that we're providing, and, and reaches a set of conditions that we are, with only one exception, fully supportive of, and as I mentioned, already initiating and launching in the case of, of registering and, and moving individuals into our programs who are accessing our basic needs programs. This brings us to the, to the one item that, that, that I ask for your consideration and that we have a number of supporters here to, to show their support of consideration. I believe we have about 50 or so supporters. They're not all going to speak, so we're not going to keep you here all night. I believe only three of them are planning to speak, so just to be, to be clear. But for so many of them, their connection to Interfaith is through the provision of, providing the SAC lunches that we provide to people who don't have food otherwise, who come to Interfaith for their only meal of the day. And thankfully, this is much more than a SAC lunch. For more than 23 years, Interfaith has been coordinating this provision in connection with other services. So rather than provide food in a park, or food on a street, or food to somebody and that's it, see you later, we're providing food as the front door to wraparound services to help people improve their lives and to not have to need our support or the community's support in the future. These meals are provided 100% produced by local faith communities, churches, school groups, and again, the, the SAC lunches provide an entry into our, our other programs and services. We've initiated new procedures and rules around prohibiting littering, and so we're confident that any concerns around these lunches being littered in the community are being addressed in that way. I'll also offer that we're sharing with our, with our registered clients that it is important that these meals be consumed and then, and then properly disposed of, and that if these items are littered, it's going to put that service at risk for everybody. And our, the people who we support are a community of people who care for one another and take that very seriously. And so we know that by increasing communication and sharing the importance of that, that we will not see significant littering of these meals. And we also look to the fact that this service has been provided for more than 23 years out of this location. I want to share that it's more than a SAC lunch in not just the way that it connects people to services, but in the way that it connects community members to supporting and helping their neighbors in need. I was at our family shelter this afternoon. It's an example of our partnership. The city of Escondido secured a critical grant from the county of San Diego to renovate the Hawthorne Center to be there for families experiencing homelessness. For more than a year, that center has provided the only place here in Escondido for families with children who are homeless. Right now, we have seven families with 13 children in that shelter. Well, I want to tell you how that shelter came to be. About a decade ago, Tom Hawthorne was making a SAC lunch after his church service here in Escondido, and he was making a peanut butter and jelly sandwich as a volunteer, and he said, "Why am I making peanut butter and jelly sandwiches? Where, where is this going?" And somebody said, "Oh, we give it to Interfaith." He said, "Who's Interfaith?" He came down and he learned more about the work that you've supported, that Interfaith has built through your partnership. He saw the impact. He saw the lives changed. Tom and his wife Dorothy helped purchase and donate the Hawthorne Center, which first modeled an innovative, cutting-edge way to help people, veterans coming out of hospitals who are homeless, and is now providing a place for families. Again, seven families here in Escondido with 13 children. The SAC lunch was his entry into our, our organization, and that's true for hundreds and thousands of our supporters, many of whom are, are here tonight, who, who provide these meals. So we wanted to just lift up the importance of what can seem like a very trivial thing, but for the people who receive it and the people who make it is a very impactful service, and respectfully ask for your consideration of being able to continue to provide that basic humanitarian need that the community is willing to provide and support, and we're willing to take responsibility for, for administering and providing and caring for in a, in a productive way for the larger community. I want to thank all of our Interfaith supporters who are here tonight. Many of them are wearing blue, and they can also raise their hands and show. We have a great group here, and, and then Mayor and Sean, I think you got the blue memo too, so we appreciate that. Maybe coincidental, maybe not, but I want to thank, I want to thank the council. I want to thank the staff for the work that we've done together over this last year to identify ways to strengthen the operations that continue to help our neighbors in need to improve their lives, to address one of the most pressing issues facing our city, homelessness, and to do that together in partnership. Appreciate the opportunity for you to be so generous with your time and for me to, to speak with you tonight. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have, and thank you again for your consideration and your support.
Awesome, thank you. I'm going to go to public comments, and then we'll come back to, I'm sure the council will have some questions.
Yes, and as Mr. Angel explained, there's only a few public comments that are for speaking, and then the rest were registering their opinion and support.
Perfect.
Our first speaker is Dr. Kadri Webb.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. I'm Dr. Kadri Webb, and I have the privilege of serving as the Chair of the Board of Directors at Interfaith Community Services. It's an honor to be here with you all tonight, representing an organization that's not just helping people in need, but is helping Escondido to thrive. I want to begin with sincere gratitude and thanks for your collaboration with Interfaith over the past year and the years preceding that, to address the challenges that we face in our community today. And as someone who has spent many years working to address those systemic challenges like homelessness and economic insecurity, I've seen the difference that Interfaith makes firsthand, not only for individuals and families, but for the entire city. Interfaith is more than just a social service agency. We are a partner in building a safer, stronger Escondido. Every family we stabilize, every individual we house, every meal we provide represents a step toward reduced strain on public safety resources, greater economic stability, and a healthier community overall. Interfaith was founded more than 40 years ago to bring structure and coordination to what were once fragmented and limited efforts by local churches and organizations, and as a leader of a church with limited resources that cannot do it on our own, I'm thankful for a hub that can take our collective resources and effect true transformation. When Interfaith steps in, we don't just provide immediate relief, but we connect people to lasting solutions, moving them from crisis to becoming contributing members of our society. And so tonight, I urge you to continue your quest to moving toward approval of our updated conditional use permit for our headquarters at 550 West Washington. We've all worked hard together over the past several months, and I think that the updates reflect thoughtful collaboration between Interfaith, city staff, council, and the community. We'd like to reinforce the partnership, and we thank you for hearing our concerns tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Webb. Our next comment is from Kegai.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members and staff. My name is Kegai, and I've been both a volunteer and advocate for Interfaith Community Service for many years. I'm here today in support of the updated conditional use permit for Interfaith Headquarters at 550 West Washington. My husband's a retired pastor from First Jedi Methodist Church. Before the, the existence of Interfaith over 45 years ago, we were one of several organizations attempting to provide food, clothing, transportation, and shelter to the community. Realizing that community needs were increasing even 40 years ago, and that we needed expertise, 14 local faith communities joined forces to create Interfaith. Whether it's helping people find housing, to access mental health care, or gain stability after hardship, we know that Interfaith ensures our community to be safer, stronger, and more resilient. I urge you to make the important change to the permit tonight, to please include the ability for Interfaith to distribute SAC lunches and meet the basic food needs of those people who register and engage in services. Though it might seem small, it is a critical entry point for people in need. The meals provide an opportunity for Interfaith to connect with individuals who maybe haven't reached out yet, and that's often the beginning of their journey towards more comprehensive, life-changing support. If SAC lunches aren't allowed, faith communities will probably try to fill the gap, but without Interfaith's coordination, those individuals will lack the structure and professionalism needed to truly help these individuals get back on their feet. With all the new updates to the permit, like safety plans and litter reduction strategies, allowing Interfaith to provide SAC lunches should not negatively impact the surrounding community. Approving this updated permit is an investment in the future of Escondido, a future where everyone has an opportunity to thrive. Thank you so much for your time and your continued support of a community that truly works together.
Our next speaker is Leila Sackfield.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members and staff. I am Leila Sackfield, and I'm a lifelong resident of Escondido, as well as the former deputy superintendent of the school district and the senior warden of Trinity Episcopal Church, which is a founding member of, of Community Services. And I'm here tonight again to express my support for the Interfaith's conditional use permit. I want to sincerely thank the council for their willingness to collaborate with Interfaith to develop the CUP before you. As I shared at the last city council meeting, I believe in collaboration. I believe in accountability as well. And approving this CUP would be a testament to the power of collaboration and a significant step towards, a significant step forward for our community. Interfaith is a shining example of how partnerships can create systems that are more effective, efficient, and compassionate. Two Sundays ago, my fellow members of Trinity Episcopal and I prepared approximately 140 SAC lunches, as we do once a month. Interfaith Community Services provides us with an avenue to distribute these lunches collectively, ensuring that they safely reach those who truly need them, and it connects those recipients of our lunches to the critical services that small congregations like ours simply can't provide. It amplifies the impact of our, of our efforts. While I urge you to approve the CUP, I respectfully ask that you consider a compromise regarding the distribution of SAC lunches by Interfaith, and I truly do appreciate the update to the CUP and how thoughtfully crafted the feedback was from both city staff and community, but I know that food insecurity is a real and pressing issue in my community. I know that because I know that 78% of our school district's students qualify for free and reduced lunch, and at some schools, that rate is as high as 90%. For many of these children, school meals were the best or only need, meals they received, and as an educator, I've seen firsthand how food insecurity affects families and how addressing it can truly transform lives. My husband, who regularly volunteered serving breakfast at Interfaith, often shared stories of young men stopping by before work to grab breakfast and a SAC lunch for later. For many, this small gesture was vital to staying on their feet. Food is essential, and feeding the hungry is not only an act of compassion, but an investment in our community. A full stomach means the difference between remaining housed or falling into homelessness, and I can tell you that from personal experience.
Leila, your time has expired.
Thank you. I urge the council to amend the CUP and allow Interfaith to continue. Thank you very much for your time.
Adriana Castanza, did you want to speak, or did you just want to have your position registered? Adriana Castanza? Oh, I do not see. All right, no more speakers on this item.
Okay, perfect. With that being said, we'll close the public hearing and open it up to council discussion. I will start real quick. Let me start by thanking Veronica and EPD and all of the other staff who took part in this monumental task. Taking 175 conditions down and narrowing that down to about half was a ton of work, and thank you all for, for taking part and doing your part in that, and thank you to Greg and Interfaith for really making an effort to work cohesively with the city and the subcommittee. Being on the subcommittee, I, I had an opportunity to ask most of the questions that I had already, but I do just have a couple before I pass the baton here. And this one, we'll start with, I, I just want to clarify, seasonal meal service, that's just like Thanksgiving, Christmas, everybody comes in for a dinner?
Yeah, we actually turned the nutrition center into a restaurant to a seated meal, specifically on Thanksgiving and Christmas, the day before those holidays.
Okay, perfect. What does, you said for the other meal services, there's like client registration and enrollment. What are they registering for, what are they enrolling for?
Yeah, so we're, we're taking all of their information, their demographics information, and that's in part so that we can identify what other programs they may have already accessed within the organization. It also allows us to be able to share and, and track who's accessing which programs at what time, what's effective, what, where there are opportunities and service gaps. We're also completing what we call is a self-sufficiency matrix for every individual, so that identifies if they have housing as an issue, employment, if they're interested in addiction treatment programs, and then connecting them to those resources.
Okay, with, so, let's see if I know how to ask this question. I'm assuming not everybody enrolls in services, but do you take everybody's name down?
So we're enrolling everybody in the program of participating in, say, in, for this example, the morning meal service?
Got it, okay. And then, would you speak briefly to the protections for your, your litter reduction strategy, I think is the last speaker put it? Would you speak to that briefly?
Yeah, sure. So part of the benefit of registering everybody for the program is going over the rules of the program with them. The rules include not littering the, not littering period, but also specifically being respectful that the SAC lunches or any other to-go meal services or items that are provided, or also keep in mind providing basic hygiene, personal hygiene items, that those individuals be properly utilized, and if they need to be disposed of, that they be disposed of properly.
And then, oh shoot, I had another question, hang on. About how many of those meals are you handing out a day to people who are otherwise not receiving services?
So I can't answer that because we don't have the data yet. I can tell you that in the future, and I think that's part of the opportunity here, is that through the new process to register all individuals, we're going to have a much more robust data set.
Okay.
What I can tell you is that in the month of December, Interfaith Community Services provided more than 6,000 to-go meals provided entirely by volunteers.
Okay, you know, just what I'm about to say, I had a long conversation with Greg over the last, a couple of long conversations over the last few days, and there, there is a perception in the community, and I share this perception, at least in part, that services that just allow for anybody to walk up are a draw to people who otherwise may not spend time in Escondido. And that's a real concern shared by several of the surrounding properties that are around Interfaith and just people in general. And then the other side of this, which we've already touched on, is the litter aspect. I personally have a friend with a business near there who has probably thrown away 6,000 SAC lunch bags. And so finding, I guess what I'm trying to relate to the council is, I am, I'm definitely open to finding some sort of a compromise, and one of the things that I had relayed to Greg was doing, instead of having the service available all day, making it only during the morning meal distribution, and then having the bags identified with the individual's name who is taking that bag. That way, if it ends up on the ground, we knows who, we know whose it was. But I think my colleagues are going to have other questions and concerns, and I'll, I'll turn it over to them for the time being, but I am in support of finding a compromise.
I guess I do have a, a question here. So you stated that you're going to be creating new policies regarding loitering and littering, and my question to you is what monitoring tools will be utilized just to track the adherence to those rules? adherence to those rules?
The proposed new conditions require Interfaith to administer a policy that prohibits services for anyone who litters within two hundred yards of our campus, so we'll be monitoring that. The most impactful, though, will simply be the direct communications with the people who we serve, to let them know that it is of vital importance because of the concern of this service as a whole, that these meals be properly disposed of. And the people we work with and support understand the importance of that, and we are confident from past experience and from the experience enrolling individuals this week, that those are common sense rules that people will understand and support. As I've shared in other conversations and briefings leading up to today, we also have homeless outreach teams that are available to support and engage with any local resident, any local business owner, mayor, your friend who's experiencing some litter on their property, we would welcome the opportunity to be there, to help that individual, to see if we can identify anyone who may be causing that litter, and then we'll talk to that individual, and if we're able to determine that they're littering, let them know, you know, if that happens, you won't be eligible for these services. So, you know, a lot of it comes down to communication and setting clear expectations.
And another question I have, because I know you're being held responsible for the area two hundred feet around Interfaith, so part of this CUP, again, is to have people, to prevent the loitering there, so perhaps they'll move on, and with that, with the trash, my thinking or my concern would be, well, are they just spreading it out into the, to other areas? So I like that it's going to be monitored, the two hundred feet around, but then is it just going to be placed somewhere else and become somebody else's problem? So I know it does sound ridiculous, but to track it, just to be able to monitor it, I would not be opposed with even a stamping of the Interfaith on the bag, just to keep track. I don't know if you'll really be able to keep track of an individual, but just to see if it's impacting the neighboring areas, because again, we're a pro-safety city, and if it looks like we're just littering and trash and things are looking dirty, it just, it doesn't give the sense of safety in parks and such.
Absolutely, council member, and, you know, it would add an additional logistical piece, but if labeling the SAC lunches with a sticker or something that demonstrates for tracking purposes that this is an Interfaith volunteer-provided SAC lunch, if that allows this service to continue, as vital as we know it is, we would be happy to provide that. Mayor, it would not be logistically possible for us to put individual names on there and track them individually, but being able to say, this is an Interfaith, you know, volunteer-created, Interfaith-provided meal, that's something we would certainly be open to exploring. And I think no matter what is, yeah, absolutely.
And your homeless outreach team would also just go out and be contacting the people even beyond the zones that we're speaking of, that we saw this evening, is that correct?
Yeah, Escondido's fortunate to have multiple Interfaith-employed homeless outreach teams serving the general community, as well as a federally-funded homeless outreach team focused entirely on helping individuals get off the streets and get into our detox and addiction treatment programs.
Okay, thank you.
You're good.
First off, thank you to staff. Thank you for all the work that you guys have done, and it's been a tremendous amount of work. For those of you who don't know how much work was involved in this, it was, it was one of the biggest projects that I think we've been, that we've had, that we approached this year. So, thank you for Interfaith as well, you guys did tremendous work, and I think there was a lot of collaboration. I think as time went by, I kept hearing better and better things about how the relationship was going, so I really do appreciate it. I understand what you're saying regarding the SAC lunch, I think it makes sense, it's a way to welcome people in, it's a way to kind of get the foot in the door, you know, I'm sure you could speak to this better than I can, but, you know, it's not one times, not two times, it's going to be multiple times, people coming before they start asking for help. So I think, I do understand that. I do support what the mayor was saying regarding restricted hours on what, when it should be handed out, I think it's logistically fair. That way, we don't have people loitering, just waiting, you know, I think there's some accountability and responsibility of when people need to be there, as opposed to just strolling in at all hours of the day, so I think that is key. But yeah, I do include, I do support including the SAC lunches, and I think a sticker or bag, I think, you know, whatever is best for an identifier, and there's three reasons I think this is important. One, it shows belonging and accountability, people who have lunches there and who are receiving help, they want to support Interfaith. I've spoken to people who have actually been at Interfaith, they do support it, and I think this is a way of them, that they wouldn't want to litter. Otherwise, you know, I think when there's no belonging, you know, seeing the sticker there or some kind of stamp, I think they would want to take the initiative of being a little bit more careful, you know, just, if it's a regular brown paper bag, they'll be willing to throw it. Seeing, you know, somewhere that they belong to, I think they'd have second thoughts, so I think that is a good idea. Also, you know, I think it has Interfaith, its ownership, people should see that Interfaith is a major provider for lunches. And the third thing is, I think it allows both parties, both the city and the, and for Interfaith, to identify areas that there is problems. So if we're seeing that there's one specific area in the city that is having issues or that's seeing littering, I think there's a way to quickly identify that, otherwise, if it's a regular brown paper bag, there wouldn't be a good way. So I think it is important to have some kind of identifier. Can you quickly tell me the logistics of when you guys, I mean, do you have this already there? Is it open for anybody who just, literally, they come up and pick it up and leave, or is it handed to them? I just want to know, because, you know, you're saying it's logistically difficult, but if somebody's handing it to them and writing their name, or a number, or something, is that possible?
In the month of December, we distributed more than six thousand to-go meals. I share that as the volume, and also, I think, to demonstrate that those of us who are in the community and, you know, I'm there every day, know that there are not nearly that amount of meals being littered in the community, right? So I think it's, from our experience, a pretty small impact. The meals are distributed, the to-go meals, as a part of our morning meal service, usually as people exit our nutrition center. We provide one meal per person, but many people say, I don't have lunch or dinner, can I please have two? And so at the moment, we provide two. Sometimes they say, my son's in the car, can I have three? We provide three. These are the types of in-the-moment additions and changes that happen that would make it, just one example, impractical to label and track individual SAC lunches. We also currently provide opportunity for SAC lunches during lunchtime from eleven to one during the day. It's also important to note, though, and I have it on the screen as the last dot point, that Interfaith provides food pantry services, and we do provide that throughout the day, so individuals come and are able to receive food and grocery assistance for themselves throughout the day. That's in addition to the SAC lunch service.
Okay. I think with that being said, like I said, I'll reemphasize that, yeah, I would support the approval of the CUP with the adding of E2, with the language of the holidays and with the SAC lunches, to give it that we add the stipulation that it is during certain hours and labeled as well. So, thank you.
Council member?
Thank you so much, Greg, for your, for being here, and thank you all of you for being here. I was wondering, I was like, everyone's wearing blue today, so, but there's been days like that where just people match, but, and thank you Veronica and team, everyone involved, the notice violation says that it was March, so it's been almost a year, so it's been almost a year of strengthening a relationship, getting hearing from the community throughout the process, and lots of internal work from the staff, so I just want to say thank you for all your hard work. And yes, and I'm seeing here on your slide, I did see the over three hundred signed letters from community members that support us moving forward with approving a CUP and also supporting the SAC lunches. So a couple of things, I'll get to the SAC lunches last, since that's the one that's the most point of deliberation here. I do appreciate the more transparency, more communication, and I've been on the council for six years, and we've, you know, I've known you, Greg, before I was on the council. I've known of the challenges that Interfaith has had with different city councils, members in the past, and from like the rotating shelters and all that, so I have followed city politics here for over twenty years, and so I know that there's always challenges, and you will always find a way to pivot, so I really appreciate that. One thing that I have consistently said was, I think more proactive, regular communication is highly encouraged, and I would like to see that, and so I think this is a step in that direction for the continued transparency, proactive, regular communication. So I think that's a good step. I also appreciate that there will be, I would have liked to see it ahead of time, but I see here that it's giving you a ninety-day window to have a security and operations management plan of how you're going to address some of these things, so I look forward to seeing that. Also, you mentioned about the, you mentioned a data point, and I wanted to let you finish, so I didn't want to interrupt, but something about you registered over a hundred people, can you tell me more about that, and when you started that, and why you started doing that?
Yeah, so this is proactively implementing the condition that's being proposed for your approval tonight, that individuals accessing our morning meal service are registered and a part of an Interfaith program. So yesterday, Monday, Tuesday, and this morning of this week, we've met with every single individual coming for our morning meal service, gathered their demographics information, entered them into our program database, which is HIPAA compliant, which respects individuals' privacies, and also completed an initial assessment, a self-sufficiency matrix, to identify what challenges they may be experiencing that lead them to come to Interfaith Community Services for a morning meal, a shower, laundry services, and then beginning the process to connect them to those resources where they're applicable. The reality, though, is that for many people, we don't have the resources they need. However, this informs securing and being able to provide those resources, housing assistance is one example. So this will help us get more people off the streets and into housing, and it also will provide, at the demographics level, data on just who we're serving here. Are individuals coming from other communities? How many of them are from our community? If they're from another community, what brought them here? This is data that we'll have and be able to share as a result of this process.
Thank you. And then about how many people do you see per day for the morning service, and does that mean they sit down to eat and they do other things? That's different than them just coming and leaving, right?
Yeah, this morning meal service, we serve seventy-five to a hundred and twenty-five people, there's some variation, sometimes lower and higher, but it's usually about in that range.
Okay, got it. And then currently now with the SAC lunches, is that just a drop in in the hours, and what is the hours of operation that you offer that?
So the SAC lunches are a critical component of that sit-down morning meal service.
Okay.
Everyone who sits and has a place to be, to be peaceful, to have a place to rest, to have a conversation with our teams around what their challenges and what their goals are. They get a hot meal, and then they get a meal for, a SAC lunch, to-go meal for later in the day. So that's a sit-down service, and then we also provide access during the lunchtime hours for individuals to come and take a to-go SAC lunch. That provision now also will require, if it is allowed to continue to approve, or allowed, if it is allowed to continue to operate, registration into our programs and services.
Okay, so it looks like, from what I'm hearing, there's two, it's not just like a twenty-four-seven or a nine-to-five, come and grab a SAC lunch whenever you want, there's times when food is being offered in an organized way, and between, and during those services, which is morning and lunch, that's when people can also get, in addition to what they're getting there, a SAC lunch?
That's correct.
Okay, and all these folks will now be registered, so you'll have their name, and you'll be capturing this in that shared database that the other, you know, the county and other service providers use? Is that the same database? Or is this only unique to your access?
Yeah, the database we utilize is for this program, unique to our program, our client database.
Okay.
When we enter them, assuming they enter into other housing assistance programs, they would then be entered into the homeless management information system.
Okay.
Which is the database I believe you're referencing.
Got it, so you have your own database to capture this internal data, and then additionally, if they access additional services, that's when they go into the more shared database?
One's within the other, yeah, complimentary.
Got it, okay. And let's see here, let me look at, because I was taking notes through all of this conversation, so just let me peek real quick and see if I missed anything. Do you, so I noticed that there's going to be security, twenty-four-seven security. Do you currently have security, and if so, like what's the change, is there any change to the security you have to what is being presented for the CUP?
We currently have twenty-four-seven security, we have two-site security, two-site security employees who are employed by Interfaith. They are certified, they have a security certification, and so we have two of those on-site, twenty-four, seven. In addition to that, we also have onsite what we call resident coordinators that provide client support and help support during the morning meal, the operations of the morning meal service. In addition to that, we have staff who are specifically related to the food programs, and then when we think about the morning meals, we also have a number of volunteers, community members, who arrive at four, four-thirty in the morning, start cooking, start making those SAC lunches, and then are part of providing those SAC lunches. In terms of what changes are being made, we're implementing additional policies and procedures prohibiting loitering, camping, littering within two hundred yards, and so we will be responsible for ensuring that those are adhered to. We'll utilize our site security as well as our other program and client-facing employees to support, to support those new policies and procedures. And then we'll also be working with city staff and with police to ensure that there is a comprehensive security and operations agreement that all sides are supportive of.
Thank you, that's helpful. And then as of now, do you know where two hundred yards in the perimeter of your site is, what street or what business that goes to?
It's significant.
Okay, but you're aware of the, you know?
Yeah.
Okay. You've already kind of said, this is about two hundred yards, and you've walked that area and know, kind of, this is what we need to keep, this is what we need to keep our eyes on, and do you have cameras that, you know, make that area visible?
No, yeah, so to be clear, we will not be patrolling a two-hundred-yard radius.
Is it feet or yards?
It's two-hundred yards.
Yes, okay.
The large, two football fields.
I know someone, I know one of my colleagues said feet, but it's two-hundred yards.
It's two-hundred yards, and to be clear, we will not be patrolling a two-hundred-yard radius.
Okay.
Around our property. We're very fortunate to have a significant team, but we don't have that significant of a team, but...
But that's what the rule says, though, right? So then how will you address that?
Yeah, so if an individual, if a business owner within the two-hundred-yard radius shares that they're experiencing litter, we'll go and visit and find out if that's an Interfaith associated litter, and then address it.
Okay. Yeah, I would encourage you to have a more proactive plan for the two hundred yards, whether that's visiting with the businesses and introducing yourself and saying, I'm the point of contact, or whoever the point of contact is going to be, I would just say, like, this is the moment to go above and beyond, and say, hi, I'm, we're Interfaith, in case, I'm the point of contact, and I'm assuming it's you, Greg, who's the point of contact for any kind of issues related to the CUP, and who, I don't know who the second-in-command is, but I would say it's really important to know that information and to also just go out there and canvas the two hundred yards, you know? I understand that it's a lot, you know, it's a lot of change, and, but I would say that if I was you, if I was in your shoes, I would be introducing myself to all the businesses within the two hundred yards and letting them know that I'm here, and if there's any issues, I would say, come to me first before you come to the city, and so I would just encourage that kind of proactive, and this is my way of trying to be very helpful, so that, you know, you, I'm always like, hey, if you have an issue, talk to the person who's providing, who's giving you the issue, before you escalate it to the, you know, to someone else. So I very much encourage that. So on the SAC lunches, let's talk about that. I think, for me, you know, as a person who works with supporting agriculture, supporting community gardens, supporting farmers, supporting food in schools, supporting food for people in general, I, it doesn't align with my values to prohibit SAC lunches to our community. One of the things that I can remember is, like, at Grape Day Park, there were some volunteers that were giving out, you know, food, and we, you know, city staff was like, no, we can't do that, it's not allowed. So we have a prohibition on handing out... So we have a prohibition on handing out food at parks, right? And and the, and people were like, oh, that's awful, that I can't believe you guys don't allow that, you know, but the, but but we would always respond with, well, we, please go to Interfaith. If you want to give out food to people, coordinate with Interfaith. Go to Interfaith and you can make sandwiches with them in a safe kitchen, food handling, all that kind of stuff, safety and, right? So we, so we always encourage community that kind of like did their own sandwich distribution or food distribution in parks and public spaces, we always encourage them, because that was not allowed in our city, to go to Interfaith. So for me, it feels really counterproductive to to squash that and say, now we're not going to allow it, because I do think people will start taking it. There's a lot of mutual aid groups popping up, and I I'm very aware of mutual aid efforts within the city, within the county, that they're filling the gaps of where they feel, you know, food is not being reached. And really with the issue of hunger, the, it's, we do have enough food for people, it's just getting the, getting it to the people who need it most. That's the, that's the logistical problem of why, you know, that contributes to to food insecurity. So I support the CUP, I support all the work that that staff has done, I support, I understand where my colleagues are coming from and I hear those complaints, too. And I definitely don't like litter. I organize monthly cleanups in my district. So I would also encourage you, Greg, to create a, add a volunteer opportunity for cleanups in your, and you know, in the area of town that you're in, is organize volunteer cleanups to help with capacity, because, so I would say that I would love for the, for us to continue to allow these SAC lunches, but accountability, right? Definitely something marking that it's coming from Interfaith. So whether that's a sticker or something that identifies who's providing, right? Who's providing lunch? Your volunteers can easily do that. That doesn't bog you down on individual names, plus anyone can give a different name, right? So, but we, but if it comes from Interfaith and it's identified as Interfaith, and then if we start to see litter, like let's have the data to back it up, because I see trash everywhere I go, and from beer bottles to cigarettes, the most litter that I see, by the way, cigarette butts, and those little plastic caps to bottled water, those are everywhere. So let's actually start, you know, maybe a check-in in six months, do we, to see, hey, are we starting to see Interfaith-marked litter? And then we could say, look, Greg, this is the problem, so what are we going to do about it, right? I would say allowing an opportunity, instead of waiting the annual check-in, have a, maybe a, you know, a six-month check-in, require that any to-go food has your, you know, logo on it, identifying from that it came from Interfaith. And then if we start to see litter that has that, we can say, this in fact did come from Interfaith. Because right now, I'm not really seeing, I think it's unfair to say that it's coming from Interfaith, because there, there's, you know, we don't really have proof of that. And so this says, we're, we're letting you know, we're giving you notice, advance notice, Greg, this is a problem and a concern, we don't want litter in our city, we want to make sure that you're held accountable to your, your new conditional use permit, that if that, you know, that passes. And then there's a midpoint check-in to see, is this still working or do we need to go back to being more, you know, restrictive? I would be in favor of of that, and I would hope that my colleagues would support that. So again, the only change for me would be the SAC lunches, to allow it within those times, right? So pretty much everything that's presented by staff with the inclusion of the SAC lunches, but include something saying it's provided by Interfaith as soon as possible, and then come back in six months, see how that's working, and then hopefully by then we'll actually have real data that shows, hey, this is, you you do have a little problem because we're seeing your sandwich bags in the community, right? So that's, I think, a fair compromise, and then it also shows if this, if in fact, Interfaith is contributing to significant litter, and then we can go back and say, Greg, you know, I I feel like that's a fair ask.
Councilmember, if I could share, I appreciate your recommendation to engage local businesses. We will absolutely do that. I think it's a fantastic suggestion. I think most of them already have connections with us, but I'd like to be doubly sure and to make ourselves available if there are any concerns now or in the future. And I love the recommendation of community improvement projects and picking up litter, and we would love an opportunity to to do that. I think it's a great way to address a concern that's very reasonable, and we have so many supporters who care so much about this community. I think we would welcome the opportunity to work proactively to go out and and clean up that 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 area around our campus.
Councilman?
Thank you. So I am the other member of the homeless subcommittee, and we, for a quite long time, have been going through this whole process of reviewing the CUP, and I must say thank you to both Interfaith and staff as they have been working to together to get this into a reasonable place for everyone. I was under the clear understanding that everything had been agreed on and that we were all good and clear and we were moving forward, and then surprised that wasn't the case. I read the the requests about the SAC lunches, and my feeling was, yeah, what's the big deal? That was my sense, because people need to eat. That was my immediate response. But at the same time, I also, as part of my responsibility, is to ask why with staff, and I was presented the reasons why, and I said, okay, those make sense, and as I figured as we were discussing things here, some ideas would come up, and I think that if we're going to work on transparency, we're going to truly work on on real partnerships between Interfaith and the city. I think this is a very good way, as a church pastor, when I come to a new church, I visit all my neighbors. I knock on their doors, introduce myself, give them my my contact information to let them know that our desire is to be a good neighbor, and that if there are any issues, let us, let's take care of it. And I was at a church where I was promptly informed by the city that there were a hundred and some complaints from neighbors from my church. That was well before I got there. Now, I was very thankful that we were able to take care of it and became very good neighbors. Now, I don't know how many personally, how many business owners are very, are well-informed about who they would contact at Interfaith. The ones that I do know in that area, that, and I do a number of just personal business, cleaners, things like that, right around there, I drive through on a regular basis, have no idea who, and are very unhappy with with the result of what happens at Interfaith. And I've raised that issue, the loitering, the the littering, things like that, and I'm talking about throughout a period of time. I'm not talking about recently, because I'm, and I'm about to get to that, that I have seen that that has been a problem, and I have asked questions. And Interfaith staff has been very clear to let me know that that wasn't their problem, that that was the county's problem, that they were the ones that were doing that. And I dispute that, and I've shared that with you, that that is the county. But I also must say that in the, ever since this has been, the cops units, the cops unit projects have been put in place in that area, there has been a tremendous change. A lot of the business owners are very happy with with the changes that are being implemented, and I believe that at this point, with the changes of the CUP, they'll also be much more open to having dialogue with Interfaith regarding the services. So there has been a lot of change, and and I applaud you and the staff for that, because I can drive down the street and I ask people, drive down this area and let me know what your impression is from a year ago, two years ago, to what it is now. And I haven't found anyone to give me a negative impression, oh, it's much worse, it's always much better, and then they provide some areas where they think would be good to improve. So in all fairness, we, I I believe that there has been a lot of improvement there, and and that is wonderful. I do believe that SAC lunches are likely something, not likely, there are something that that are needed, and it's a good way for people to have something easy, easy to be able to move around and and eat wherever they need to. The littering is an issue, and I would support that midway point that we're kind of at right now, that they get labeled somehow so it can be identified. I like what councilmember Martinez suggested about the cleaning. I I am sure you're well aware of, and there are plenty organizations that have also mentioned to me that that they would, that they're looking for projects like that. So I think that would be something very, very good, and I think it would be something very, that would bring a lot of goodwill, which has been lacking between city leadership and the leadership at Interfaith. Now, six thousand lunch, SAC lunches in in December, sure, I'm sure that was out of the ordinary amount of that you do likely, it's the holiday season, more people are coming in, things like that, but it's still a substantial amount, I'm sure, of of the possibility that there could be littering around. I do have a question regarding, one of, one of the statements made was that seventy percent of those that receive services are from Escondido. How is it determined that they are from Escondido?
Thank you, councilmember. That statement is specific to our drug and alcohol treatment program, and seventy percent of the individuals in question in that program are coming directly off the streets of Escondido. We also separately do case management for individuals who are unsheltered on the street through our homeless outreach team. Those programs find that eighty percent of individuals who are on the streets either became homeless in Escondido, their last place of residence was in Escondido, or they are from Escondido, they have family here.
So in the first program that you mentioned, the determining factor from Escondido means that they they came off the streets in Escondido?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. So I wanted to ask that question, I wanted to give props where they needed to be done and publicly go ahead and and state my support for the CUP, obviously, that's come all the way from the subcommittee that I was there, but I do believe that there needs to be some kind of labeling to the SAC lunch, and I think there should be some time of, some kind of restriction to hours also would would be something positive. So those are my statements, and I I look forward to being able to continue to see improvement in in that area and our working relationship also. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Fitzgerald, did you have more to add? And if you do, do you mind if I make the motion real quick and get a second, and then I'll come back to you?
Of course.
Okay, perfect. So I will go ahead and move to approve Resolution 2025-02, including the recommended language for Section E2 with respect to seasonal meal service, and with an exception for SAC lunches during morning meal service, and with the understanding that the bags will be, have some sort of an identifying marker, whether that's Interfaith volunteer-provided lunch or whatever, some sort of identifying marker. And I would ask for a second on that.
I second.
Okay, with the second, that also comes just with a, I would like a verbal commitment just to, trying to think about the easiest way to notify the neighbors. We briefly spoke about that, I think that was a good recommendation. Would it be possible with, you know, before January's end, to just send a letter to the businesses that fall within the two-hundred yards, making a brief introduction to Interfaith and giving a contact number if somebody feels like they are experiencing littering or other issues?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And then I would also like to request a, I don't remember who recommended coming back more than once a year, but on or around the July sixteenth city council meeting, could we schedule an update?
Yeah, we would, we would be, we would absolutely like to come back on a more frequent basis, and if there is opportunity during that time to share about any negative impact that we're seeing among people who are not able to access SAC lunches because of the potential restriction in hours, we would welcome an opportunity to be able, we'd like an opportunity to be able to share that in partnership to explore, especially if we see what we anticipate seeing, which is an actual reduction in littering.
Fair enough. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. So, by the way, I'm the one who said two-hundred feet. Sometimes I say I'm fifty-five, I'm not, but yes, it's two-hundred yards. I do agree with councilman, councilwoman Martinez, in when I was asking about the accountability of of making sure that it's being monitored and the litter's not occurring, I do agree with you that the responsibility really should fall on your shoulders to at least, not every day going out there, but at least kind of regularly patrol that area, or have someone drive around, not a patrol, and you can see litter. So, you know, being able to to put that responsibility back on you, and hopefully that will save you a lot of headaches in case there are any violations, you know, that's just a prevention of of receiving any kind of violation for that. So I like that idea.
Sure.
Okay, just, so I, so it seems like you're supportive of the midpoint check-in, so six months you have going, it looks like we're all supportive of having something identifying where the bag, the SAC lunches, so not banning SAC lunches, and I heard you, in your motion, you you said the morning service, so right now it looks like it's morning and lunch where those are provided? No in-between, though, just those two times? So then, so just the, just the morning, not the lunch?
During morning meal service.
Okay, so it will eliminate one of the timeframes, but still allow that? Okay. Got it. I would prefer both, but I, you know, I feel like we're compromising here and we're incorporating different suggestions, so.
And I think to Greg's point, we'll revisit in six months, and if there's opportunity to take a step in one direction or the other, we can certainly do that.
Okay. I will, I will support not banning the SAC lunches in hopes that we could bring back the lunch, and also having data to really show an impact of what the litter is, and so we'll have actual like data to say, hey, we're seeing, so I support us having that data to be able to address an issue, and then I would encourage, you know, the proactive, you know, engagement and, you know, and cleanups.
Okay, thank you. Please open the voting.
Voting is open. Motion approved, five-zero.
All right. Before we move on to item seven, well, first, thank you, thank you, staff. Before we move on to item six, we're going to take a five-minute break, five minutes. All right. I assume you're all here for a reason, sticking around. That takes us to item six? Yeah, interviews for the Citizens Oversight Committee.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, as well as all the candidates. I thank you for being here. As a quick reminder, the way the format is going to work is candidates will come forward, you have an opportunity to introduce yourself, answer the pre-written questions that have already been distributed to the candidates, and then you'll be able to provide an optional conclusion at the end. A total of five minutes, the timer is right there, so five minutes, complete everything, and then after that, you can either remain for the rest of the meeting, the council's going to deliberate and discuss, but the appointments may or may not take place this evening. If they do not take place this evening, I will notify all the candidates accordingly, and I thank you for your patience through the previous item. With that being said, we're going to be first going through the business organization seat. One worth noting is Mark Metza, who was one of the candidates, contacted me just before the meeting began, and he unfortunately had an emergency come up, so he's unable to be here, but he is still eligible for appointment. So with that being said, our first candidate is Kirk Carson.
Hello, how are you all? Thank you for having me. My name is Kirk Carson. I am a fifteen-year Escondido resident. I have four children, all who go to Escondido schools, and I'm excited to be here just as an extension of my belief that citizens should should participate in their government, and something that, you know, I would encourage my children to do and hope to leave Escondido a place that they enjoy for years to come. So I'm excited to be here, thank you for having me. So as far as the questions go, the first question, my experience with financial planning and budgeting, so I have a, I'm a transactional real estate attorney, I'm in-house counsel for a private real estate investment company based out of Del Mar, but I also have my own real estate consulting business that I run out of Escondido, as well as investing in small apartment buildings here. So I review a variety of different kind of budgets, both tenant budgets, my company buys and sells hotels, so we review hotel operating budgets, real estate P and Ls, balance sheets, things like that, so I'm familiar generally with financial planning and budgeting, financial modeling, but I also recognize I'm not an accountant, so I certainly defer to people who have more experience than I do and more sophistication in those kind of areas. So I think I have enough to be dangerous, but I still, I look for expertise. As far as prioritizing services for the measure, for the measure funding, so I, I would, I generally think that, you know, a government should focus on the, the most basic and critical functions, and I see those as safety, infrastructure, utility, and emergency services, so those would be the areas that I would see the the proceeds be focused, and hopefully that, you know, over the twenty-year term of this measure, that when it goes up for extension at the end of the twenty years, that we would do such a good job with the use of those funds that we would not just need to see it extended. As far as my, my. As far as my my time availability, as much as is needed to make this to this role successful and to be a part of the process. So I'm not exactly sure what the expectation of time is, but whatever it is, is what I'm, you know, willing to do. And then community engagement, so I'm open to, to, you know, advice from from folks that probably spend more time in that arena than I do. But I always appreciate getting, I read a lot of kind of the local newspapers, and I appreciate getting updates from council members and other folks in those newspapers. So I'd be happy to write a column for those if that would be of interest to the council. But I'm also open to other methods if if folks have have ideas in that regard. So I think that that addressed, I think that addressed the questions. I'm excited about the opportunity and hope that this can be a really successful use of these these proceeds. And I'd ask if there are any questions of me.
Awesome, thank you. I do have one follow-up question. If you are not chosen for the Citizens Oversight Committee, would you be interested in any of the other boards or commissions that we have available?
Can I give you a conditional yes?
Yeah.
I'd like to know what they are.
Things like the Planning Commission, Traffic and Safety Commission, those kinds of things.
Yeah, I actually would be quite interested in the Planning Commission.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
There any other follow-up questions from the council before we move on? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Carson. Our next candidate would have been Mark Metz. We're going to move on to Carol Rogers.
The shorter people are up here now.
I feel you.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilmembers. I really appreciate this opportunity. My name is Carol Rogers. I am a longtime Escondido resident, and I'm a former business owner here in Escondido. I currently serve on the Board of the Downtown Business Association, the Escondido Community Foundation, and the Public Art Commission. With regard to my financial experience, through most of my professional career, I held positions that where I had responsibility for budgeting and profit and loss. This ranges from large corporations to small businesses and the businesses that I own myself personally. I have a very diverse business background, and I think that that background helps me to grasp difficult concepts, things that perhaps I'm not that familiar with, but I have a lot of experience to lean on. And most of my experience is in operations management, where we're looking for changes, where we can create measurable and sustainable results. And I think that's some of what we're going to need to do together as we move forward with this tax increase. I also know that the numbers don't tell the entire story. We'll have to look at needs versus wants and balance those things. My own personal thoughts on our priorities here might sound kind of simple. I think it's clean and safe and quality of life. And those are both really big umbrellas that cover so many things. We're talking about homelessness, we're talking about street repair, we're talking about all of the things underneath that to make things happen. Also, our art and culture community, our library, our senior services, we want to maintain and grow all of those things. My commitment, I, I, let's see, I'm committed to our community and to Measure I. I was on the citizens group that brought Measure I to the ballot. My position was community events chair. So I was the person who was out, one of the people that was out there working events, talking to the public, gathering signatures. And I got to hear a lot of people's thoughts about where our taxes should go, how they want to see the future, how our city is being managed. It was a really fulfilling and educational thing to do. I really enjoyed it. As far as my time commitment, I'm already very committed. I'm already very involved in the community. And whether I'm chosen for this position, I will stay as committed as I am. I love Escondido. I want to be part of the future. My service with the Downtown Business Association, the Public Art Commission, the Community Foundation, Esco Ali Art and Museum and Arts-Growing Escondido Culture allows me the opportunity to spend time with citizens and visitors from all walks of life. And I think that the missions of all of these organizations also give me a broad view of the needs of citizens, nonprofits, and businesses. So I'm really fortunate to be involved in a lot of aspects. I believe that this experience will allow me to be an effective member of this committee. And I thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Our next candidate is Carl Edward Trujillo.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Carl Trujillo. I am a local business owner and entrepreneur here in Escondido. I've lived here for four years, going on five in March. And before that, I grew up over in Valley Center, which is the next town over, so whole childhood, it's always coming down to Escondido. So really been around the the community my whole life. I currently own one business here, Dr. Buchard's Kombucha Brewery, over on Grand Avenue, so I'm right there in the heart of downtown. And I hope to open more businesses here if the economy grows, which is something I'm hoping to be a part of by being on this committee. As far as finance and budgeting goes, I, being the owner of a startup business, I am used to working with tight budgets, having wants and needs that maybe are bigger than what the budget allows right now, and having to make those hard choices about what we want versus what we can afford. So that's where majority of my experience comes from, is from just hands-on, my own business. That's really where a lot of my knowledge comes from. My priorities, on the other hand, would be ensuring that parks and recreation and all those other things, infrastructure and things like that, that go into making Escondido a nice place for people to be. That improves the quality of life for everybody here and makes it an attractive place where people actually want to move to and be at. Something I think a lot of people think about Escondido right now is, oh, there's not a lot to do here. So when they have a free night to go out, they choose to go over to Carlsbad, out to Tansanitas, down to San Diego. So really, upgrading our infrastructure to where people want to spend their time here instead of going to other places out in the community. Not to mention, in light of what's happening up in Los Angeles right now, I think it would be very important to ensure that our emergency services have the funding they need so that we can be prepared and avoid any anything close to that, you know? As far as time goes, my business affords me a very flexible schedule, so I'd really be able to put time into this weekly, monthly, whatever's needed. I can be here pretty much every Monday, Tuesday, my business is closed. I can devote all that time here if I need to. As far as community engagement goes, though, I'm actually in a really unique position where I spend a lot of time behind my bars on the weekends. And being behind a bar, communicating with people over a drink, people get very honest. So I hear from people all the time, oh, the city should be doing this, oh, the city should be doing that. You know, people are very, very honest when they're having a drink. And so I'm able to have a lot of dialogue and, you know, share back information with them about what's going on with the city. I get asked probably every day, somebody walks into my bar, hey, what's going on with the construction out there, you know? So I probably told probably a hundred people myself personally about the Grand Avenue vision, what's going on there. So I already have a lot of face-to-face time with the community, and so I would obviously bring that into this position as well, that direct line with the community. So I believe that's all I have to say today. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Carl.
Any questions?
Any follow-up questions? Okay. All right, thank you.
Now we're going to shift over to the at-large seat applicants. Our first candidate is Tanya Bowman. Ms. Bowman appears to not be here. Our next candidate is David Cazares.
My name's Dave Cazares. I'm a, been a resident here for owning a home out in East Grove for about nine and a half years, and I'm really thankful for this opportunity. I am a fiscal conservative and a Republican. I've been a voting Republican for forty years, and so I have never voted for a tax increase. And I'm honest about that. But this was different. I voted for this, and I really would like to be on this committee to, you know, to do my part and to help out, make sure that money's going to the right place. As far as my, and the reason why I feel so strongly about that is I felt this was an issue involving the safety and security of our citizens. And so obviously, my first priority would be, you know, public safety. And there's a lot of issues with that because it's not just, do we have enough cops and enough firefighters? It's how do we retain and recruit them? You know, a lot of times, you have to, you have to pay competitive wages and benefits in order to do that, and you have to have money to do that. And so I think a lot of it should go there because we have to be safe. And also, the infrastructure, and that's just not just current, you know, maintenance of what we have, it's also new infrastructure, like, like, like what you guys did with the Grant Avenue thing. We have to attract new business to Escondido. And, you know, that's, that's going to be the tax base. And so by making the city attractive, I think that goes a long way into, you know, getting businesses here and having them survive. The third thing is, priority I have is the homelessness. Obviously, we have a lot to do with that. I know you guys have worked on it a lot, but some of these programs require money. So my experience, I've been with the employee of the State of California for the last thirty-two and a half years. Right now, I'm a detective for the California Department of Insurance Fraud Division, so I investigate allegations of insurance fraud. A lot of time, that involves going through countless records, accounting documents, financial statements, bank statements. And so I have that experience there, have to write detailed reports about what I find. Prior to that, working for the state, I was an investigative auditor for the California Department of Justice, worked for the Bureau of Gambling Control, and there I did audits of legalized gambling establishments, the card rooms in California, and, you know, looking at their books, looking at their general ledger, trying to find, you know, evidence of, you know, hidden ownership or, or, you know, theft or things like that. So, you know, I'm not, I'm not no CPA, but I know how to look at audit documents and I know how to, you know, ask the right questions. As far as how much time to commit, I'm about to retire in April, so I'm going to have a lot of time. And to answer your question, Dane, if I don't get picked for this, I would be interested in other commissions and committees. And even before that, I can always take time off. I've got so much time on the books. I'm encouraged to do that. So how would I engage the community to demonstrate the value? Well, the first thing I thought of was social media. I know you do a lot of that. And then I thought, well, also, we need a webpage for the city, the city's website, specifically for this, talking about how much money is spent, how much comes in for a certain time period, and how, and what it's being spent on. You know, we're talking about transparent communication. And then I also thought of, you know, calling up David Ross if I get picked for this, and, you know, he's the editor of the local newspaper, and have him do a little story on the committee and what we're, what we're trying to do and what, why we decided on certain things, and then where to go to to find that reporting on what money's being spent. So in conclusion, I would like to just say that, you know, this is really important to me. Like I said, I never voted for a tax increase before, but this was something different. I felt I had to do it, and I want to do my part as a, as a community member and help out, and I think I have a lot to offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Any follow-up questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Our next candidate is Carolyn Clemmons.
Good evening, Mayor White and Honorable City Council Members. My name is Carolyn Clemmons. You may recognize me. I've been in front of you quite a bit in the past. I've served on the Escondido Library Board of Trustees for the last six years, some of those as president of the board. In addition, I was on the Escondido Independent Redistricting Committee that we, where we redrew your, our, our maps. I'm here tonight because I have a vision for Escondido, and I'd really like to serve on the Citizens Initiative Committee. A little bit about about me personally and my background in finance and budgeting. I am currently a program manager, and that's kind of a nebulous term. What it means is that I am given requirements from my customer and a budget to fulfill those requirements. I have to plan out my work. Usually that means planning a budget of anywhere between ten to fifteen million dollars a year to fulfill those requirements, flowing those requirements to my team, and then tracking them to completion through the year. So I have quite a significant amount of experience understanding financial requirements and tracking metrics towards those requirements, and then producing a deliverable to fulfill those requirements. As far as prioritization goes, my, I have three, three priorities, the first one being infrastructure. And this is a large term, but how I define it is what our community and our residents need in order to live happy and successful lives in the city. That means public safety, that means parks and rec, that means the library, that means ensuring that, you know, our residents have the same services that our surrounding cities provide, right? The second priority I have is economic development, so ensuring that we bring people to the city and that we make the city a place where people want to get together. My third priority would be modernization. So this is looking towards investing in technology to adapt to a changing world. So, you know, what, what could that look like? It could be providing Wi-Fi capability or connection, you know, across the city so that people can be more connected. From a time commitment perspective, I'm not going to promise that I can do as much as it takes. What I will promise you is that I will be extremely efficient. My job demands a lot from me, but the city and my service to the city is something that I'm extremely passionate about, and it's, it's extremely important to me. That being said, I think fifteen to twenty hours a month is what I can commit to. If, if that needs to be changed or upped, I can always reconsider and see where I can make adjustments. I would engage the community in multiple ways. With my service on the Library Board of Trustees, as well as the Redistricting Commission, we have performed a lot of focus groups, something that I do in my role as a program manager with my teams, something I can lead. Additionally, we have, like Mayor White was asking the fellow applicants, you know, we have a lot of boards and commissions of volunteers who are extremely passionate about our city's future. So engaging with those folks, going to their meetings, you know, talking to them so that they can talk to their communities about what we're doing here. And then also, you know, getting booths at festivals, right? So Grape Day Park, having some, sitting down and telling people what we're doing and getting their input would be something that I'd be, I'd be interested in doing and what I would do if I was selected. In conclusion, you know, my husband and I just bought a new house in Escondido, and we wanted to make sure we were still in the city when we were looking for options. So we are invested here, I'm invested here. We're here for the long haul, and I will continue to come in front of you and, and, you know, serve the city in my capacity as a volunteer. So thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Any other follow-up questions? Okay, thank you again.
Our next candidate is Michael Costanza.
This starts when I start speaking, right? All right. Good evening. My name is Michael Costanza. In 2021, I was honorably discharged from the United States Navy as a hospital corpsman. After that, I went to Banfield Pet Hospital and worked as a practice manager. And right now, I am a full-time student and chief operations officer at Amazing Studio, which is a technology startup that offers custom applications for clients and software-as-a-service applications. I believe I'm qualified for this position because I have a creative and strategic thought process. When an issue arises, I do not When an issue arises, I do not complain about the issue, but voice concerns and offer creative solutions to address each of them. As a member of Escondido, my desire is to serve in a capacity outside of the normal. My experience in financial planning and budgeting started personally while I was in the military, where I created custom budgets, utilizing Excel for junior sailors to accommodate their unique needs. Each budget required diligent efforts to apply to each sailor's specific circumstances. I have also applied those same techniques for myself and members of my family, and helped others pay off over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in debt. Professionally, while working at Banfield as a practice manager, it was my job to align hospital goals to meet corporate goals. This included reserving manpower hours, maintaining funds to accommodate monthly inventory, and strategically planning to get the most utilizing the least. In my current position at Amazing Studio, I focus on developing client and company applications, while budgeting and planning throughout the development cycle to ensure product development and meeting expectations. Next, I'd like to address how I prioritize, how I would prioritize city services for Measure I. For starters, I'd like to review the current financial status and all that it encompasses. After, I'd like to review areas that can be optimized for efficiency. And the areas that I would personally like to prioritize are community development, to include parks and recreation, community pride and events, overall community cleanliness, and homelessness. As for my availability, I attend Cal State San Marcos full-time, but other than that, my schedule is rather flexible. A man is only as great as his wife, and my wife and myself believe this opportunity would be a good fit, and I am committed to applying myself to the service of the city. I believe we can engage the community and the value of Measure I by utilizing social media. This includes options like Everything Escondido, Escondido Friends, or establish a new Facebook page with the sole purpose that would be to communicate, document, and report Measure I funds, and how they are being allocated. As mentioned previously by other candidates, Escondido Times Advocate would be a great opportunity, if we could reach out to them and potentially get a column that is ran weekly, to let them know the updates, that would, I believe that that would prove fruitful in the long run. In conclusions, at the end of the day, I am a candidate you'd want, if you're looking for someone to bring thoughtful and strategic solutions to complex problems. Lastly, I just love numbers. I seriously like looking at Excel. I do formulas, manipulate things, if I could do that for the rest of my life, I would do it. That's why when this opportunity opened up, and I saw it in the newspaper, I had to jump on it, talked to my wife, she approved. So I'm standing here today requesting that I would have the pleasure to be able to do that. Yeah, and I would just like to be a productive member of society and the community that I'm in. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Michael, sorry, Michael, not George Costanza, Michael Costanza. Any other follow-up questions? No, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Our next candidate is Sabrina Covington.
Greetings, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Mayor and Council Members. It is my distinct pleasure to be here in front of you today to apply for the Citizens Oversight Committee. I know from doing stand-up comedy that five minutes is actually quite a lot of time. So I'm going to take that time to give you some background on me, some things you may know about me and some things you may not, and then I will be sure to answer the specific questions. As mentioned, my name is Sabrina Covington. I am a business owner here in Escondido. I own two businesses, two different real estate brokerages, Covington and Associates, and Hanson Realty. Hanson Realty has a rich history in Escondido, in the development of the Auto Park and many other large commercial buildings in the city, so I'm proud to be their broker of record. And so I do believe that I'm currently an active member of this community, and I was not born and raised in Escondido, however, I feel like I am. And I think that's exhibited by my experiences day-to-day, all the warm smiles and pleasant conversations that fill my days with all of the community members, I feel like this is my hometown. My activities in Escondido have been business and community-related, with many times informal contributions to the city. So currently, I feel the call to formalize my role with the city and to allow my contributions to hold more weight. Some of the community organizations that I am currently involved with and have been involved with in the past, I am involved with Interfaith Community Services as a contributor, and as a side note, also a recipient of services back in the day. North County Chamber of Commerce, San Diego Children's Discovery Museum on multiple committees. I am a proud member of the San Diego Nice Guys, the oldest independent charity in San Diego, where we help individuals and families throughout San Diego County with in need of short-term help, and to prevent situations such as homelessness. And I can give you multiple stories about that in, in your free time. I am also a member of the Ranch of Santa Fe Rotary. In the past, I have been the business domain champion of the child, San Diego Childhood Obesity Initiative, and also on the Committee for Farm to School for the San Diego COI, which is the Childhood Obesity Initiative. Some of those things you might know about me, some things you may not know about me, is that prior to being a real estate agent and broker, I had a career in public health and worked as a registered dietitian, and I'm still a registered dietitian, and worked in many different capacities in childhood nutrition and public health, so clinical and public health. And so I worked more in the, in that department, I worked more in the areas of City Heights, Lemon Grove, and Chula Vista. And I just want to speak briefly about a collaboration we did there, I thought I had more time. But essentially, we had a public safety issue in which some girls that went to school were being harassed on, as they ran track. So to shorten up that story, we brought in transportation, police, public health officials, government, and in the end, we ended up moving a bus stop. That's where people were sitting and huckling the girls that were running track. So there's a longer version of that story, but that, that situation had a profound effect on me as far as collaborating with different agencies. In regards to the questions at hand, on the financial planning, I am the proud daughter of a CPA, and I grew up to the sound of a ten-key, as my room was next to my dad's office. And he was a CPA, so he taught me early on about finances. I also run two businesses, including all the budgeting, so I feel like that's adequate experience for this role. As far as prioritizing city services, there's quite obviously public safety, parks and rec, streamlining development, and I do have an idea regarding the Interfaith lunch sack. So ask me later, because I have a very good idea regarding that. That could solve a lot of problems. And, running out of time, running out of time, speaking of time, I have lots of it. My kids are graduated from high school, and my business is streamlined, so I'm here for whatever is needed.
All right. Thank you, Sabrina. Any follow-up questions? All right. Thank you.
Our next candidate is Lori Hatley.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council Members and Staff. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I am Lori Hatley, and I currently serve on the Escondido Traffic Safety Committee as a chairperson there. And I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity to open this up to the public to apply for this position. I would like to let you know that I am a fiscal conservative, and I did not vote for Prop I. I voted against Prop I, so I might be an interesting person to have on this commission. But I do understand that it was probably necessary for that proposition to pass for the fiscal good of our community. And since it did pass, I would, that's why I'm here, I would like to get involved since it did pass. As far as my experience with financial planning and budgeting, I handle my own personal finances, including doing a rather extensive, long taxes myself, and I have several rentals in Escondido. I also have a flower business that I run, it's based in Valley Center, where I grow Phil flowers, and I sell them to different wholesalers in Vista and San Marcos, and those flowers are then transported actually around the world, so, and I'm a sole proprietor for that business, and I take care of the accounting for that business. But having the rentals and in the investment of this community, you can tell that I am very much invested in, in Escondido, and I have lived here for the better part of twenty years. As I stated in my online application, even before the catastrophic fires in Los Angeles, I believe that our number-one priority should be fire and police services in our community. We also need to just write up there, resolve the vagrant and transient problem in our community as very much a top priority. Laws need to be further enacted and enforced, as well as continuing good quality community programs like what was presented here tonight, like Interfaith. Also, when I talk to people, in general, road conditions and infrastructure always come up, so I want to just mention that as being a top priority also, resurfacing the roads and keeping them in good condition for people's vehicles. And then I'd like to mention just the importance of Grand Avenue being such a star and highlight in our community, cruising grand and the businesses there, and just being kind of a focal point for our community, so important, and I'd just like to also say that's a priority, just to keep that going. I noticed the other day, I tried to go to Cute Cakes, and I noticed that they closed their doors on Thanksgiving, and I was very, very sad to see that. I know that there's several businesses closing there, and I really think we need to get that all going and on an upward swing again. I'm, as far as time goes, I am retired, with the exception of taking care of my rentals and the flower business, I'm retired from the California Highway Patrol and from a couple of other law enforcement-related jobs. So I can put in as much time as necessary for this position. I will engage in the community by continuing to talk to community members on a daily basis, and as like other candidates have mentioned, social media, of course, is a top priority, and I like the idea of keeping in contact with the Times Advocate. In conclusion, Escondido's a very desirable place to live and raise a family, and if given the opportunity, I would like to help on the Citizens Oversight Committee to keep it that way. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Any follow-up questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Our next candidate is Ernest Cubian. I know he was here earlier, he may come back in the room shortly, but move on to the next candidate, Jennifer Larson.
I'm a wife, mother of four, grandma to two, super excited about. I'm a full-time caregiver to my developmentally disabled younger brother. My husband was born and raised in Escondido, and we've lived here together with our family for about seventeen years in a home that my grandparents purchased in nineteen seventy-five. So we love living in Escondido, we love the community. My experience with financial planning and budgeting is simply that I do my own taxes, I'm a fiscal conservative, I believe in living within my means and staying out of debt. How would I prioritize city services for the funding? Like most other people, I think we need to prioritize public safety, fire, firefighters, and road maintenance and critical infrastructure. As far as time commitment, I can be present for all meetings and, you know, research projects, you know, based on what we're doing. As far as engaging the community, I would be pretty much like everybody else, social media, and I'm a regular reader of the Times Advocate, so I would engage with, with the paper. And, let's see. Oh, I'd just like to say that I value Escondido, I value the lifestyle that we have here, we raised our family here, and I would be honored to be a part of just the process, Citizens Oversight, trying to safeguard our resources that are coming from taxpayers, you know, in the city. So, in conclusion, I'm really no better than any other candidate, and based on a lot of these other interviews, I am not the most qualified candidate for the job, but I just wanted to throw my hat in the ring, and I'm willing to serve and help if I'm asked to. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Our next candidate is Colleen McKinnon.
Welcome to Hour Four and a Half, at least, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members. So I'm Colleen McKinnon, and I have to start by acknowledging something that you already know. I had the longest application in the bunch. I didn't hold back, and there's a couple reasons for that. First, I did not know I would get a five-minute speech. Second, it's not every day I get to add pages to the city's agenda. And third, we're talking tens of millions of dollars here, and I wanted to make sure I gave it a really good effort. But now I have a speech, what's left to tell you? So I thought long and hard about what I was going to say, that you didn't already read about me. So, Escondido isn't just a place where I volunteered. I grew up here, and my daughter is now the fourth generation. And when I heard that our ship, this place, was going down, myself and many other people stood up and asked, "How can I help?" And I've asked that question a lot of times before, and I'm really grateful that the answer has never been, "Colleen, could you please be our treasurer?" Nobody's ever asked me that. But, when you're looking at, you know, if you, let me hold on just a second, but if you manage to read my application, you'll know, most of my experience with financial planning is on board service, usually as a president of the organization. Oh, and if you ask my husband, he'll be like, "Oh yeah, she's the CEO, she's the COO, she's the CFO, she's all the things." But I couldn't do what I do without treasurers, well, and TurboTax. But, if you want to ask me about what I'm going to prioritize as far as city services go, you got to start with the financials. The financials are where we paint the picture, it tells us what's going well, where we're messing up, what needs more attention. But you can't just look at the numbers. You have to look at what we said we were going to do. Are there promises that we need to keep? Are there plans that we need to live up to? That's accountability, and it's at the heart of that nonprofit work, which is what I mostly do. If you don't do accountability, your donors and your members are not going to keep showing up and giving you their time and their talents and their treasure to your cause. So that is something I can bring to this committee. And I can be accountable because I know what I'm talking about. I've spent hours, I've done interviews with David, I've done podcasts with Deanna, I've talked to Ryan about the marketing materials, I wrote the rebuttal for the Voter Information Guide. I have lived and I have breathed Measure I for months, basically. But, I don't want to stand here and tell you that you need to get an Olympic-sized pool, or if we need more medium-term notes. That's not why I'm here. I'm here because I want to bring people from our community into the rooms where you're already having those discussions. I want to fill the town halls. I want to use my connections, my leverage, and the momentum that we've already created with Measure I, and I want to bring it to the city and see what happens next. But one thing, oh, and as far as time, you can have most of it? You can't have Thursdays, because that's a half-day for my daughter, and Tuesday at noon, I have to go to Rotary. I also need to eat and sleep. But, once we're done setting this up, I think we can probably get the work done within about ten hours a month, maybe even less. What's next here? Oh, why? I forgot to tell you guys why. So why am I here? Why do I always say, "What can I do?" And the reason why. So, I'm a forty-four-year-old woman, and most of my friends have moved away from Escondido. They did not choose to stay. And I want my daughter to make a different choice. I don't want her to leave. I want her to see Escondido as a place to build her future. I want to see, I want to see a community that can make her- I want to see, I want to see a community that can make her feel safe, where she can have opportunities and she can live a quality life. I want to help create a city that she'll choose to call home. Thank you for your time.
Oh, questions? No?
Thank you.
Our next candidate is Larry Owen. All right, we will, Mr. Owen, Larry Owen? No, okay. Move on to our next candidate, Sarah Richardson.
Hello, Mayor and members of the council. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak today. Many of you already know me, my name is Sarah Richardson and I'm really excited about the opportunity to be here today. So, I currently serve on the DBA Board and I actually just got elected to be the treasurer, so I better have qualifications for financial planning and budgeting for that. I also was a business owner in this city for, well, my business was around for 11 years, I was a business owner for a little over three. So, our business was Cute Cakes Bakery and it was a $2 million business and I had to work with employees up to, I think at some point we had about 35 employees, of all walks of life, of all age groups and being able to work with customers and help them with their financial decisions as large as, you know, wedding cakes, as well as just operating a business in general. So I really do feel I have the ability to make educated decisions with data. I think that's the biggest thing. You can't really go off of what people feel, you have to have data to make those decisions. What I would prioritize with Measure I is bringing more of my generation to this city. As you saw with the Interfaith community, there was no one of my age group with that group. And I think in order for services like that to continue and to grow this city, we need younger people in this city. We need to develop a city where people want to come, buy a house, rent an apartment and grow their family and enhance our city. Obviously, there's many levels to that, including making the city safe for people, having infrastructure and parks for people to bring their kids to. But I think my main focus is figuring out how to bring more people that want to stay in our city. And as somebody else mentioned, you know, making them want to enjoy the time in our city and not going to Carlsbad and Sanitas, downtown San Diego, things of that nature. In terms of time that I can commit to something like this, as being a previous business owner, I worked far too much and my husband would say that it was at a detriment, but it's fine. So, I definitely have a lot of time to commit to this and I feel that I'm going to devote the time necessary to do this successfully. I'm a type A person and so I want to do it right and I want to do it well. So I'm going to devote the time necessary to make sure that it is successful. In terms of engaging with the community, I think I have a unique ability, being a previous business owner and also serving on a board, that I know a lot of people and a lot of people know who I am and I don't have a problem having tough conversations with people or even just walking up and talking to somebody randomly. I'm a very energetic outgoing individual, so I wouldn't really have any issue with, you know, showing up at meetings, asking the right questions and figuring out what our citizens need and how we can continue to grow this amazing city that I've been a part of. So, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Great. Our next candidate is Christine Spencer.
Hello, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and City Council Members. I am Christine Spencer, I'm sure many of you know who I am up here. And I'm so excited to be considered for the Citizen Oversight Committee. My background, I'm raised in North County, went to elementary school in Escondido, my mom was actually a physician here at Palmar Health and loved Escondido. I spent all my fun time here and years. After receiving my bachelor's and master's, I came back with my family and now I raise my two kids here as well. I have been a public servant for many years, first in political sphere and then also in the nonprofit sphere. So I understand about bringing in money and taking money back out, which I think is very important in this Oversight Committee. Currently, I am a board member of Escondido Art Association, I'm actually their volunteer fundraising director, bringing money in. I'm on the Escondido Community Foundation, on the Grants Committee, giving money back out. I'm on the Escondido Rotary Club, which we do a lot in the community. And I have two kids in school here and so I'm involved in musical theater, I'm involved in soccer, I'm involved in all those things where it's important because you meet all the different families here and all the different levels and people who are provided by those community services and those who donate back out. My experience in financial planning, so I am a Director of Grants and I have been for many years for many different sized nonprofits, whether small or large. And with that comes a major responsibility. It's not only program development and grant writing, it's making sure we keep to those what we say we're going to do. Because we report on a grant and we don't do what we're supposed to be doing, we will lose the grant and we will lose future funding. I've also gotten major nonprofits here in San Diego and in other areas out of budget deficits into the green. And I think that's important because seeing that budget reconciliation and being able to be part of that piece, these nonprofits, many of them cannot sustain past that year. So it's crucial to know what the budget deficit is, what you can cut, what you can't, how you're serving the community. And I think that experience is very important with this Citizen Oversight Committee. My priorities, just as I ran for City Council, my priorities are very defined. We need to help the budget deficit. What we do with the budget deficit, the city staff members, they're hurting. We need to help them so we can retain them, but also hire the ones we need for permitting, things like that. That helps us foster economic development. Public safety officers. My niece is, actually works for the Police Department and her husband is a fire safety officer. I hear all the time how important it is to hire and retain these officers. Escondido, we need it right now. I own a home here, I've seen it, I know how hard it is. So I think that's important. Community services, I think we definitely need to make sure we are keeping those community services open, whether it's library, helping the seniors, kids activities, a lot of different things. There's a lot of rumors out there right now that are probably just rumors, but like closing down the ballpark for kids and things like that. So I think that's really important. And I think help stimulating economic growth. That means helping small businesses, which I think the permitting with new staff will help, but there's other things that we can do. So we can have prosperity for all. We want people to come here, visit here and want to be here. And I think that's really important. My time commitment, well, I ran for City Council knowing that the big time commitment that takes and I thank you all for that because I know it's a big commitment with the subcommittees and everything like that. So I do have time open for it. I work hybrid as a Director of Grants, so I do have open time for that and I can work anytime on the weekends, things like that. And I really welcome that time. As you know, when I ran for City Council, I was huge on passing Measure I because when I went to the Leadership North County Program, I saw what other cities did with that money and I know we can do it now. So I think working with the different organizations like Downtown Business Association, East Valley Business Association, getting our name out in Escondido Times Advocate, or what we're doing with the committee, going to great day festivals, having a booth, going to kids', you know, my children's baseball games and talking about that with families, any chance that we can get out and in social media outlets, I think is really important. Thank you very much. Oh, and any questions?
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you.
Our final candidate is Lawrence Trautner.
Thank you again, City Council, so far giving me this opportunity to possibly serve the city one more way, one different way. My name's Larry Trautner and I've been resident of this city for 15 years now. Answering your questions, where are my financial and back, and planning background, I'm probably as qualified, if not more qualified than any candidate you've seen so far. For example, number one, I was, I ran an office with 600 people, 500 people in it that had a budget of about $125 million a year and had all the departments, or most of the departments that you have here. The one that we didn't have was public work, but we had IT, HR, engineering, legal, payroll, everything. Number two, is I managed projects that had construction costs between $50 and $3 billion. And each year we had to develop a budget for that, an estimated budget for that year, a planned budget, and we had to control it carefully. Number three, as an executive in a very large company, I was involved in strategic planning for that company. Number four, as an engineer, I'm good at numbers. I was only an engineer by degree, in two years I practiced it, but then I went into management after that. And finally...
Larry, can you speak closer to the microphone? Thank you.
Sure. And finally, as a consultant after I retired, I was hired by several companies to review projects and organizations that were having budget problems or staff problems or schedule problems. Not that we have that kind of issues here. My priorities, I think as a large candidate, and I'm not sure my priorities are all that relevant, I would see my priorities being to find out what the community wants and be able to bring that to this committee. Having said that, the question says, "What are my priorities?" My priorities would be safety, which is police and fire, and a subset of that would be homelessness and gang violence, which is something I've been involved with, not as a gang member. That's too compact. Second, time available, even though I'm retired, I'm very busy and I would commit the time necessary to make this committee a success. Finally, public engagement, or community engagement to make, help Measure I succeed. Carol and I have been in the town here for 50 years, we've lived in a lot of places in this country in my business and we really like Escondido. We want it to not only survive, but we want it to succeed. And as part of that, we go headfirst into volunteering. I've served on several nonprofit boards and my volunteering efforts have been focused on Escondido. I think it's a great city and I don't spread my volunteer hours around, I work mainly in the city. So I've been in several nonprofits' boards and part of that, I was involved with reviewing grant applications and awarding grants. I have been involved in a whole plethora of spectrum of diverse nonprofits where I volunteered hands-on. Example, I mentioned Compact, Interfaith, Step Beyond, Stampa School Academy, and you know, those are kind of the community needs organizations I've been involved in. I've been involved with arts organizations, the Center for the Arts and I've worked with both art organizations in town. I've worked with the, and business side Rotary, I've been very active in Rotary, as many of you probably know. So, why is that related to community engagement? Well, I would work through those organizations where I'm volunteering and making sure they understand the benefits of Measure I and where the money's being spent and in a valuable way. So, I guess, the other thing, I guess I would say, I've also would like to work with the Measure I Committee. I wasn't involved in that, but I think they've done a lot of homework in terms of finding out what the community interests are, so I'd do that. So in summary, I think I'm very well qualified financially and budget-wise. I think because of my, I love Escondido so much, I've been involved with so many different diverge, divergent nonprofits, I've seen the whole spectrum of the needs in this city. I've worked in a fishbowl environment where I've been in a project where state, local and national organizations were fighting the project, that happened to be a high-level nuclear waste project. And I worked way up from being a junior engineer to a vice president of a company and I did that through teamwork. I think teamwork is critical and I, as a member of this committee, I would work with the committee, the city staff, City Council and the community to make sure that Measure I is effectively implemented. That's all I have. Questions?
Thank you, sir.
No further candidates for that.
Did anybody else walk in who may not have been?
I did not see Ernest. Did you arrive? Tanya? No.
Okay. I'd like to express my gratitude to those of you who have applied for the Citizens Oversight Committee and for those who took part in the Measure I Committee and those who helped get Measure I over the finish line. I think I speak for all of us and say thank you for your hard work and dedication and for your interest in serving the great city of Escondido. At this time, I think I'd like to request that the council members submit their top three or five candidates to the city clerk, who can relay those to me and then in the following meeting, we will make the appointments. Any objections to that? Okay. Thank you all again, truly appreciate your time. Go ahead.
Thank you to all the candidates. This is going to be extremely difficult. There's a lot of you that I know from the community and, you know, I just want to let you know that you are super valued and I think you guys are just an excellent pool. Thank you so much.
And Mayor, just for clarification, just one, for the next meeting, it's a workshop environment, so we'd be scheduling for the following meeting after that, which would be February.
Perfect. February.
And I just want to say also thank you to everyone involved and those, not only those who were involved with the committee, those who voted for it and just, I feel like no matter what happens, you will all have, there's opportunities for you to be engaged, so thank you.
All right. Does anybody have anything they need to add to a future agenda? And if not, we'll move on to council member subcommittee reports and other reports. Councilman Christian Garcia. Want to kick us off?
Not particularly, but, I'll get started. Yeah, so, as always, meeting with constituents, I think the past, pretty much since the year started, I think I've been extremely busy, meeting up with people, things that were, I think a lot of people are looking optimistically into this future, into this year and I think it's because we have a lot of opportunities, so a lot of people are sharing their ideas. I do have a CEA, Clean Energy Alliance meeting that's coming up. I have a briefing tomorrow and I will be having that meeting in the next week and then I will be attending the DBA meeting and also the historic meeting later this month, so. And as always, thank you to my community for the privilege of serving.
Councilman Joe Garcia.
There we go. Just a couple of things. I've had various meetings that I, that I can report on, but there's, I think, something that's a very important pressing issue that I'd like to speak to for a moment. I serve on the North Comm JPA Committee, which is for the last, now we're going into two years that as a city we've become members of. It's the dispatch for fire for North County. Now, Escondido was the last jurisdiction to become members of that. And on Friday, I had the opportunity to go on a ride along with our fire department and saw what happens when there is a vegetation fire. There was one in Fallbrook. We were in the middle of another call when that happened and the battalion chief said, "Hey, Joe, would you like to see how this unfolds, how it works?" And I said, "That would, that would be so educational." So we got back into the truck and I could see where the fire trucks were coming, the engines, the ambulance, I could hear the radio calls, who was calling in, who was taking command, how it was growing. I said, "What about planes and helicopters?" And he says, "Oh, they take off immediately." I began to understand that we have one battalion chief in basically each jurisdiction and if that battalion chief gets busy, our San Marcos, the San Marcos one gets busy, guess who gets the call to go, the closest one, which is likely going to be Escondido to take over a fire over there, or they come over here. In light of what's happening in LA and in that area, one, it was extremely educational for me to see that in the middle of the chaos, they were able to clarify and get things done and they took care of the vegetation fire. It could have been a major, major problem. Now, why am I saying that? Our city released a statement regarding fire preparation recently and I would encourage everyone to go and take a look at that because I have receiving, I have been receiving emails, "Are we prepared?", "What's going on?", "How about the water?", things like that. So please take a look at it, it is a wealth of information for you about your preparedness, what do you need to do as a family, as a business, your routes, coming in, going out, things like that. What apps should you be aware of to get notifications, all kinds of stuff like that. And I want to thank city staff for doing that and putting that out there. And I want to thank city staff for doing that and putting that out there. I'd also would like to assure our citizens that Escondido is, has wonderful staff taking care of it, making sure, in fact, we just had a water break last night. And one of the information that we received right away was regarding water, we are okay in order to be able to fight a fire. So let me tell you, I am proud of what our fire department is doing here, the preparation, the education, and props to that, City Manager, and please give my regards and thanks to our chief and the staff that have been working on that. And everybody, please rest assured, but if you have concerns, let us know. That's what we're here for. So instead of making a report of what has happened on my committees, I just wanted to share that for everyone to be, to have that information. Thank you.
Councilmember Fitzgerald.
Well, I was going to say that about the ride-along, because I too went on a ride-along with the FD. It was incredible how well they work with what they have and how resourceful they are. And then also to see just the joint, the mutual aid when we are out. We had five ambulances that were tied up, and this was within a two-and-a-half-hour period. And San Marcos and Vista were ready to respond three times. So it's good mutual aid, but I'm hoping that we'll be able to get them all the five more that they need. Nothing really on committees, I just want to talk about what's going on at the mall. If you haven't been at the mall, please go. Oh my gosh, so many neat, family-oriented businesses. Nine businesses have come and opened at the mall. And there's three more that are getting ready to open. So if you haven't gone there, please go to those businesses. Everyone here speaks about being very pro economic development. And don't forget, there's a lot going on at the malls and some community events there. They have a youth community. I could go on and on, there's a lot going on. And then also, in February, the circus is coming back to town, so I'm hoping that you guys will go out there. And again, supporting what happens here in Escondido, you know, Grand Avenue and the mall, you're supporting our city, so I just wanted to report on that. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Martinez.
Thank you. Thank you to our volunteers who showed up at El Norte Park, and we cleaned up the surrounding neighborhoods in that area on Saturday, so I really appreciate that. The next cleanup will be February 8th, and it'll be part of the Love Esco volunteer opportunity, so that'll be available on the website soon. And then I do have, on this Friday, I have a San Diego River Park, Strandiego River Park Joint Powers Authority meeting. So I will be attending that, and will report on what's happening there. Additionally, I served three-and-a-half years on the San Diego County Water Authority, and they do this amazing program for citizens called the Citizens Water Academy. And so I encourage anyone who's interested in learning more about water, especially our local water system, to check their website. You can Google San Diego County Citizens Water Academy, and the application is open now. And you do have to commit to the three dates that's on the application. And so I'm happy to nominate Escondido residents to have Escondido representation on that. So let me know if you're interested. Again, the San Diego County Citizens Water Academy. That's all for now. Thank you.
All right. Last week was the first Sandag Board of Directors meeting of the year, where we appointed the chair, the vice chair, and the second vice chair. Then Monday, I had the City Selection Committee. For those of you who don't know, it's where all the mayors get together and make appointments to the Airport Authority, LAFCO, Air Pollution Control District, and other appointments. Where I was selected to another two-year term on LAFCO. We had an update in our Budget Subcommittee today, and was honored to address the Government Affairs Committee at the Chamber of Commerce. Upcoming meetings, Sandag Transportation Committee this Friday, this Saturday is the Latino Film Festival, January 23rd is the next North County Transit District meeting, and also on the 23rd is the DBA Mixer. With all that being said, on behalf of the City of Escondido, I would like to express our condolences to the family of Lorraine Boyd-Boise. She was the first female elected mayor of the City of Escondido, and during her tenure, she was responsible in part, or if not in full, for bringing the Children's Discovery Museum, the Escondido Child Development Center, and then her service continued on until the day that she passed away. So again, we wanted to express our sincerest condolences. And with that being said, that concludes my report. City Manager?
Nothing to report.
Okay. Let's get out of here.